So, good afternoon, everybody. This is, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Allen. Bates.
Bates here.
Berman.
Berman here.
Brown.
Here.
Davist. Ford. Fraz.
Fraz here.
Ichbaw.
Ichbaw present.
Gums.
Gums here.
Kenyon.
Here.
Kiyas.
Kiyas present.
Kopi. Leonard.
Leonard here.
Lewis.
Lewis here.
Martin.
Martin present.
Molina.
Molina present.
Sanchez. Shepro.
Shepro present.
Silva.
Silva is here.
Strathman.
Strathman here.
Surges.
Surges here.
Tepe.
Tepe here.
Wallace. Wosniki.
Present.
Hira.
Here.
Your quorum.
You have a quorum. Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Kiyas, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Delighted.
The United States of America, unto the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I please have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the March 9th, 2022 meeting? And we will be deferring the minutes from April 26, 2022, until our next.
Berman will.
Thank you, Mr. Berman.
Play a second.
Are there any changes or additions to the March 9th minutes? Seeing none, hearing none online. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bates.
Bates, yes.
Berman.
Berman, yes.
Brown.
Brown, yes.
Fraz.
Fraz, yes.
Ichbaw.
Ichbaw, yes.
Gums.
Gums, yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Kiyas.
Kiyas, yes.
Leonard.
Leonard, yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Martin.
Martin, yes.
Molina.
Molina, yes.
Shepro.
Shepro, yes.
Silva.
Silva, yes.
Strathman.
Strathman, yes.
Surges.
Surges, yes, sorry.
Tepe.
Tepe, yes.
Wosniki.
Yes.
Hira.
Yes. Very good, thank you. Is there any public comment? See anybody online? See no one in the audience, very good. We're on to our presentations.
Madam Chair, Gums?
Yes, Ms. Gums.
I do want to apologize. I would just like to take note, as we speak, there is another shooting in Texas. There are 14 children dead and one teacher at an elementary school. So, our thoughts and prayers go out to them.
Indeed, indeed, they do. I heard that on the radio myself, and it is another school shooting. So, to their families, and to all the families who have experienced such violence. All right. And then on to the Safety Act, which will help address some of these issues. First of all, before we begin, I'd like to really give my strong thanks and appreciation to all the members who put this together. This has been very challenging to speculate what your needs are going to be for the next three years, and being able to put a three-year spreadsheet together. It took you a lot of time, effort, energy. I'd like to really commend Terry Hunt. I forced him as the liaison with all of this, saying, "Terry, you got the job, can you do it?" He said, "Absolutely." So, he has done a great job putting all of this together and aggregated all of the information onto the spreadsheets which you have received this afternoon. There were two spreadsheets, and I'd like to call your attention to both of them. One of them is very detailed-oriented, which gives you a really careful analysis of what the compensation study is going to be looking like, what each individual new employee would be getting, what their benefit package would look like. So, that's one. And I would suggest, at this point, please use it as a reference, but I don't want you all, any of us, getting lost in the details right now. The spreadsheet that I'd like you to take a look at is the copy, the Safety Act summary, which will give you a much larger picture, a bigger perspective, that we can look at with a reference to the other. So, it is... This came in the mail today.
Email, right.
It was an email today. So, if you didn't have a chance to take a look at it, maybe we can quickly get some copies. Could you just email upstairs and ask just for a little packet of that? That'd be very helpful as we go through, so you can take your notes. But I believe you did receive this handout, is that correct? Which is very comparable to it. So, it's just in a different format.
This came out today?
Correct, correct.
At the risk of being a troublemaker, I would point out again that we have repeatedly asked that if we're going to be discussing or considering things, we'd like to have it more than, earlier than the same day of the meeting. It just makes it very difficult.
And, well said, well said. But this was an incredibly complex report, having to bring all these departments together. So, it was a significant amount of work, but your comments are well said.
I agree with you, but there's always a reason. The end result is, is that some of us don't have a chance to consider it.
The one that she sent out to the board. So, we'll have the packet that'll come downstairs momentarily for your review. But in the meanwhile, this other one will suffice for right now. So, after this discussion is over and we have an understanding of what the future costs are going to be, not maybe, but I believe will be, if my understanding of the Safety Act is correct. I would like to remind everybody that we'll be taking a look at the budget and figuring out if we can fold this into next year's budget. If it looks, and we'll be doing that in June, at least to get some concept. If there is an opinion that that is not going to be available to us for '23, in July, we'll begin discussion on whether or not we're going to be going out to referendum. And if that is the case, we'll ask, obviously, for the lowest denominator possible, and you'll be able to take a vote on whether you'd like to do that, to put it to a referendum. It has to be decided in July, because it has to go to the circuit clerk in a very timely manner. And we'll can bring Vince Coyle back to review exactly what date, so we know what specific dates. But I believe it is 79 days out. 78 days before the election. 79 days it has to be, be in, and decided upon to go to the circuit clerk.
Madam Chair, question?
Yes, sir.
Do you contemplate that we would be doing that at our regular July meeting, or would there be a special meeting later in the month?
I would assume that we should do it as a special meeting, because I believe there would be an important conversation that needs to be had.
I agree, thank you.
No, absolutely. This is unusual for this board to do that, and it really needs to be thoughtfully decided upon, on what our next steps are. So, with that, I'm going to be turning it over to our state's attorney, who obviously has much more knowledge of what the Safety Act is all about. And I, she can do a quick review of the main points what the Safety Act is going to be covering, and then we can get into the budget numbers.
Thank you. So, over the last few weeks, and at the request of this board, the many different judicial and public safety partners have been taking a look at the Safety Act, which is 764 pages, to find out what the needs are going to be over the next three years. The Safety Act, as you know, was created or was passed through the lame duck session in 2020, and was signed into law by Governor Pritzker on January 2nd of 2021. The Safety Act stands for Safety, Accountability, Fairness, and Equity Today, and it was a sweeping piece of criminal justice legislation. Many of those items went into effect in July of 2021, more went into effect on January 1st of 2022, and we expect more to happen for January 1st of 2023. Included within the Safety Act was police reform, the use of force, detainee rights, body cameras, pre-trial fairness, deflection, law enforcement, training, and, most importantly, what is going to happen with cases when they are in custody and time limits that we have with them. There were many pieces of this legislation that we were able to fix with trailer bills, and those are ones that had, or we expected to go into effect by January 1st of this year. We are still actively working with members of our legislature to continue to work on this, especially when it comes to pre-trial fairness, and you're going to hear a lot about that today. The problem with this is that a lot of this was an unfunded mandate, and a lot of this was something that I believe didn't understand the repercussions of everybody who was going to be affected. So, for example, it was very obvious that every police department in all of the state of Illinois would have to have body cameras for their police officers, at least by January 1st of 2025, depending on the size of that community. However, what nobody thought about is what would happen to the prosecutor's offices and the public defender's office, who would have to store all of that body camera, who would have to edit all of that body camera, and would have to somehow have a discovery system that made it easy to be able to tender that to one another. What you're going to hear from today is the different members of JPS who are being affected by the Safety Act, and why we need the funding throughout these next three years. We've all worked together to find out what is an immediate need versus what is a need that we anticipate later on, and what is something that we would need at the third year. What we're committed to doing is, obviously, asking for what is needed. So, when we tell you that there's something that we're looking for and have to have in the first year, it's because we know, based on our assessment, that those are, that's personnel we're going to need. Now, there are other personnel, because of body cameras, for example. You've heard us all talk about a study that was used that estimated that the amount of body cameras we were going to have, based on the minutes of each body camera, that there was a mathematical formula that said that we all needed a certain amount of attorneys that were going to be added to our offices, or judges who are going to have to be hearing this. What we're assessing in regards to that is, we don't necessarily need them now, because body cameras are not going to be put in place fully until 2025. However, we're going to continue to assess this need and how everything goes. I was remarking to my first assistant in the office before, that when I was a misdemeanor domestic violence attorney, I would do five trials in one afternoon. And now, sometimes, they could barely get one trial done. And that's not because I was just incredibly fast at trials, but that was because my evidence was a police report that was about a paragraph long, maybe a 911 recording, a victim and a police officer. Now, we have squad videos, we have body cameras, we have ringing doorbells and other recordings that happened. So, the amount of technology that is actually going into these trials is much more significant than it was when I started here in 2005. And this is going to have a ripple effect, because as long as it's taking for us to put cases through the system, the same thing happens to the public defender's office, and it clearly happens to the judiciary as well, to make sure that they have enough judges and court staff. The circuit clerk needs to be able to have people to staff that as well. And what you're going to hear from each of us is how we believe our staffing needs are going to need to be addressed over a three-year time period. I do want to say a big thank you to Terry Hunt, because without Terry Hunt, you wouldn't have this fantastic spreadsheet. And he's online now and is available for questions. Terry has been working these last few weeks diligently on it, getting not only the data for myself, but all of the judicial partners. In addition to that, he put it into a very complicated spreadsheet that I believe some of you may really enjoy, and others may look at it in the same way that I did, with barely a bit of understanding. But then, there's a summary that talks about that. But Mr. Hunt spent the entirety of his weekend working on this. So, Mr. Shepro, to your point, the reason why is, it had to be approved by all of us. It was put in a format that he made very understandable for every single one of us, and it wasn't until today that I was able to send it out for review for everyone. So, I wanted to give a big thank you to Terry for giving up his time to make sure that this was as clear as possible to everyone. So, with that being said, if there are no further questions about the Safety Act itself, I'm going to go ahead and talk to you about the state's attorney's needs. What you're hearing from our Safety Act summary is that we have categorized this in different years, what we would need in 2023, what we believe we would need in 2024, and what we would need in 2025. Now, again, as this goes along and we see how it's actually affecting us, this may lessen, or it may even increase. But we're constantly looking at this to see what is the next step. What you're going to note from this, too, is that we've also put down a specific program, so you can see what is related to the Safety Acts, and what may be related to another statutory need that we have. Within our first year, the state's attorney's office believes that we are going to need to hire attorneys to deal with the pre-trial fairness. Now, pre-trial fairness is the elimination of cash bail. The way that the statute is currently set is, it says that there are a certain amount of cases that the state's attorney's office will have to file a pre-trial motion on that says, "We would like this person held." The best example of that is a first-degree murder case. In order for the judge to hold that person, we have to file a motion detailing why it is that we want to hold that person, and what specific charge it is that's eligible for it. That is going to take a significant amount of experience, because there's also a portion of the Safety Act that says that it's a Class III felony if we knowingly put down misinformation. If you've ever been to a bond call that we have, you see that we're giving this information maybe about an hour before the bond call hearing, which includes a synopsis and the criminal history, and we make arguments to a judge. We're going to be putting something down in paper that is also going to have a swearing to the information, so we want to make sure that it's right. So, this has added a significant amount of requirements that we would need for that. So, in addition to the pre-trial fairness portion for the assistant state's attorneys, we are going to need a support staff person who's going to help them. Now, these are individuals who are going to work with my felony review division that I already have, which is made up of three attorneys. And then, this is all their job is going to be, is reviewing the cases that come before us and working at these pre-trial fairness hearings. So, that way, we have dedicated people who are trained to do what they're supposed to do. I don't know if Chief Judge Hall will talk about in his presentation, the planning that he's already put into this of what it looks like. As you know, because of the advocacy of Judge Hall, and having been in other programs where we become the pilot program here in King County, he is making it so that we are ready to go on January 1st. And that includes how we're going to set up a courtroom that's just specifically going to deal with this. Because of pre-trial fairness, and because of all the body cameras, we are going to need additional people who are going to help us out with our IT needs. I would invite each and every one of you to come to the courthouse and sit down with one of our current IT people, and see the length of time it takes for him to be able to download something from a police department, put it in our system, move it over to where it's accessible for our attorneys, and then see what happens when the support staff person has to download it into a whole other program to send it over to a defense attorney. What you'll see, what's requested in here, too, is that we need a case manage, or not a case management system, a discovery system. We have done a significant amount of research, and we have identified four different possibilities for people who can provide a discovery system, the cheapest being one for $130,000, but it would eliminate the majority of the work that is being done. Within that, obviously, is any type of a conversion program, because every police department is going to have a different way in which they're going to keep their body cameras and their squad cameras. And so, we need to be able to transfer all of that over to us, convert it to a way that everybody can review it, and so that the public defenders and the private attorneys have the ability to look at it as well. In addition to that, the state's attorney's office is going to be requesting that we have two new attorneys assigned to our civil division, specifically to deal with the influx of Freedom of Information requests. Because we are going to have all the body cameras and squad cameras, and a FOIA could be filed on us, just as much as it can happen on a police department, we need to be ready to respond to those. These are going to be hours upon hours of video that the attorneys are going to have to review, and make sure that, one, it can be sent over under FOIA, and, two, that it is edited in the way that protects the individuals in this investigation. There are often times that there are children who are walking through a scene of what's happening, especially if you're at a domestic violence event. We need to be able to blur their faces out for their protection. So, you need very experienced attorneys who understand the complex law behind this, and have the time to be able to review everything. We are also looking for evidence clerks. Evidence clerks, again, are people who are... I'm sorry, Mr. Shepro, yes?
I believe, is it correct, that the FOIA has not been extended or amended to reflect the additional time? It's still the same?
Yes, that's correct.
How, how, how long of a time?
Typically, it's five days that we have to respond. We can ask for an extension for a reason if we need to, but again, if we're getting multiple requests, that's a significant amount of information to go through, that's hours upon hours of video. In a typical domestic violence, you'll have three police officers who respond to that, and on average, it's about two hours. So, now, you have six hours on one case, that's body cam. Let's say they ask for the body cam and the squad video. The squad car is also sitting there for two hours, and it's three different cars, so now, that's 12 hours. If somebody requests all of the information via FOIA about a case that we have with this information, that is going through the body cams, going through the squad cams, going through the police reports, the 911 recordings, the CAD reports, victim statements, defendant statements, and a variety of other evidence. So, we are looking at a significant amount of work that this civil division, as you all know, who is already overworked, there is no ability for us to be able to lump anything else additional on top of them.
And the extension is only for five more days?
Correct, yes, and it's for a reason. And I think, unfortunately, if we try to say that we don't have the time to get to it, I don't know that that qualifies as a reason. We're requesting evidence texts. The evidence texts, again, are going to be the people that are going to help to download all of this information and send it out. It takes us a lot of time to be able to do that now with the technology we have. Imagine doubling or tripling the amount of evidence that we're receiving. Additionally, and related to statutory requirements, you've heard me talk about the need for a cyber crimes unit and a child abuse unit. Crimes usually is child pornography cases. And we know that when somebody is downloading this, there's a system that actually monitors it, because this is the time that places like Google and Amazon and AT&amp;T, when they see somebody doing that, they're more than willing to turn that over to the authorities. So, it goes to a centralized database, and it's up to us in law enforcement to be able to investigate that and prosecute it. It takes a significant, a significant amount of talent to do so. We've already reached out to the Attorney General's Office to partner with them, to have them help us out with these cases, but their resources are limited just as much as ours are. Now, these are cases that I believe are going to be held in custody more because of the Pre-Trial Fairness Act, so there is a small relationship to what we're doing here, which means that we are going to need to get those individuals to trial quicker, because they're in custody. They could demand their speedy trial rights, and we need to have people who are going to be able to actively prosecute and investigate those cases. We're asking for people to investigate and be case managers on child abuse cases, and I'm not talking about the misdemeanor domestic violence portion, where it might be a parent shoving another child, a parent shoving a child. Now, this is a crime, obviously, but we have a significant amount of cases where we have abusive head trauma, also known as shaken baby cases, and we just don't have the expertise to deal with those cases. And again, those are going to be people, because that's a Class X felony, or a homicide case, if the child dies, that are going to be held in custody. This is a specialty, looking at the science behind what happens to a child when they are shaken in the way that these cases are, is something that you need experts to investigate, to talk to other family members or witnesses, and then, obviously, to prosecute those cases. So, you have that summary before you of my first year. I'm not going to go into the second or third years, because I believe that you can go ahead and look at that, but it deals with other issues, especially body cam. You'll notice that we didn't really request any additional attorneys for that yet, because we really don't know what it looks like. And understanding that we need to be good stewards to all of you in terms of what we're asking for, we're trying to do this in a three-year time period, so that it's much more feasible for the county to be able to do. I do want you all to note that none of this, some of this does include, obviously, computers and technology and things like that, but it does not include space. For those of you who have come through my office and you've seen how crowded we are, just know that we are completely in 100% capacity in our juvenile building, in our civil building, in our branch courts, and in my office with the criminal division. I cannot fit another single person in there. My pre-arrest diversion people, who are grant-funded mostly right now, are actually in building management, who have been gracious enough to let them stay, but that is not a long-term fix. We need space, and whether that's renting space until we can build a space, it's absolutely necessary, not only for myself, but for others. So, with that being said, I will go ahead and turn it over.
Any more questions?
Yes.
What is your current count of assistance?
I believe the last count was 69.
So, we're looking at the needs, eventually, of almost doubling of the staff?
I wouldn't say almost doubling, but between support staff as well as attorneys, we're going to at least do a third more.
And I think you've said on previous occasions that these are not new attorneys hired out of law school because of the level of complexity that will be required. Many of these will have to be experienced people who don't have a learning curve.
Correct.
At our very high rate of pay.
Yes, and also, what we have to take into consideration, and this is in the spreadsheet, is of all the studies that we've been doing, we are significantly lower than a lot of counties, especially Lake County, who is about equivalent in terms of population with us. Again, this is another task that Terry Hunt has undertaken, where he's looked at their classification and their years of experience, as well as ours, and he's done that for attorneys, support staff, investigators, advocates, and case managers, to see that we start off okay, but then it dips down, which is why I lose attorneys all the time, who have been trained, who know how to do trials, are in felonies, but just can't afford to have this lifestyle as an assistant state's attorney. I'm sure public defender Conan would echo that. Judge Hall, who saw a lot of loss of people during his time as the first assistant in the state's attorney's office, would echo that. So, what you'll see included in all of this is the anticipation of an increase in salary for individuals, so that we can keep solidly fantastic staff to help keep our community safe. Any other questions before I turn it over? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Rishal Conan, the public defender. I'm going to talk on our slide that was included in your packet. First, I just want to echo Ms. Moser's sentiments. When we were preparing all of these figures and our anticipated needs, we did try to sit down and be good fiscal stewards in doing this, and that is why, in my slide as well, you see some things up front in 2023, and some things are put off to 2024 and 2025. Part of that is, we don't really know what any of this is going to look like. We are anticipating, but our needs could be less, they could be more, in years going forward. So, that is why not everything is being asked for in the first year. But specifically, I have broken ours down into three categories. The first is our domestic battery and DUI unit. We are anticipating that, at some point next year, the second floor of the Judicial Center will turn into three courtrooms that are specifically domestic battery and DUI. So, those would be for felony and misdemeanor cases. Currently, the public defender's office staffs two misdemeanor courtrooms on that floor. One is the DUI courtroom, and the other is the misdemeanor domestic battery courtroom. In the misdemeanor domestic battery courtroom, we have three attorneys, and the DUI, we have two attorneys. As part of the Safety Act, a domestic battery case is a detainable offense. So, that would be for a misdemeanor domestic Uh, so that would be for a misdemeanor domestic battery or a felony domestic battery. So we are anticipating that the number of clients that we have that are charged with domestic batteries. Will increase as far as those that are detained. You've heard us talk a lot about um, numbers, crime numbers going down, unfortunately. Domestic battery is an area where crime numbers are increasing. So we believe that our numbers assigned to us will continue to go up in that specific category. As well as the number of clients being detained in jail will increase for that specific category. Therefore, we are asking for one additional attorney for that court for the second floor as part of those changes. Uh, that will help us be uh, similar and comparable to the state's staffing for those courtrooms. Certainly for, for this second floor project to succeed, all of us have to be up to staff. Our office handles the majority of cases in all three of those courtrooms. And so if we are not able to efficiently and effectively deal with our cases. It is going to be a backlog for the whole system. So we are asking for one attorney in regards to that second floor project. Second is the pretrial detention hearings. Uh, as Ms. Moser has indicated, these hearings are going to be quite different from what we do for, from bond call now. Right now, when we um, staff bond call and we do staff bond call 365 days a year. We have uh, minimal time to speak to our clients and gain information from them. And most of the information that we gain from them is their personal information, where they work. Um, how many children they have, things that we can present in regards to the setting of their bond. But these detention hearings are going to be much more in-depth. Uh, the state's attorney is required to give us much more discovery than what we are receiving right now. So we are going to have to be reading all of that discovery, be prepared for it. It will entail uh, much more in-depth conversations with our clients. Because it is no longer just about their personal information, but it is specifically about what they are being charged with. We, under the act, we have to have face-to-face contact with our clients. Uh, so that will take more time. And additionally, as part of these hearings, under the new Safety Act. We can raise issues of legality at these hearings, so we can contest the arrest. We can t- contest the um, collection of evidence if we think that there are constitutional issues involved. So again, that is going to take more effort and time on the part of our attorneys to prepare for that. And it is also going to take experienced attorneys to do this. Because they are going to have to be able to identify these issues in the discovery that we receive. So we are asking for three attorneys dedicated to that courtroom to handle all of these detention hearings. As well as an additional support person and an investigator. And the investigator, because we believe in this, and the more in-depth discovery that we receive. We may have to send investigators out to talk to witnesses and to survey the scene prior to these hearings. In regards to the body worn cameras. As you will see from the spreadsheet, the attorneys and staff that would be requested for those has been put off to twenty, to fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. And that is because not all agencies are required to have the body worn cameras at the same time. So again, in trying to be good fiscal stewards, we are going to try to wait and see what our needs will be. Once we have all of the agencies involved in that. However, couple of things to keep in mind about the body worn cameras. Under, we, as attorneys, we are ethically obligated to watch all of these videos. And we need to watch them from beginning to end. Sometimes we get videos that are hours long and maybe there's only two minutes of those videos. That has to do with actually what happened, but we have to watch from beginning to end. We can receive anywhere from one to ten videos or even many more, depending upon the seriousness of the offense. It is very rare that you get a situation where only one officer is involved in an offense. And certainly that is safety reasons for the officer, so it is much needed, but that means that we get more videos to watch. Additionally, attorneys, when they're watching them, it takes time to watch them. Sometimes it takes more time than the length of the videos because they have to start and stop and take notes and go back and check things. So it's many more hours than what the video actually is. We have fabulous support people in our office, but none of them have IT experience. They were not hired because of their IT experience, they were hired as support. But they are the people in our office who are downloading the videos, attaching them to our files, trying to figure out issues if we have glitches in the videos. That's not what they were hired for, they're doing an excellent job of it, but to, but they have other duties as well. So as Ms. Moser is, has requested, we are asking specifically for an evidence technician, so to speak. Someone who has a little more IT experience to help with the downloading. Because right now, unfortunately, different agencies use different systems. And um, that causes us to have to download from many different players. Uh, so having someone with some IT experience would be very helpful and probably a lot more efficient in handling those videos that we get. Um, finally, one issue that is on our slide is space. As with Ms. Moser, we are about at capacity. Um, we have one office left in the judicial center and no offices left at either of our other sites. Uh, so thus, uh, our slide does indicate the cost, we had buildings and grounds come in and take a look. Um, the figure that is in the slide does take into account. Every space in our judicial center uh, office right now that could be turned into a new office. Um, I did include that for fiscal year twenty-three. That may not all be necessary for that year, but that is just the overall price that they gave me uh, to turn every. Look and cranny we have left into an office. So i- if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
No, I think we're fine. I'm sure there'll be quite a few questions after we hear everybody's uh, reports, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, I'm Teresa Barrero, the circuit clerk. Uh, I would just like to point out that all of the uh. Positions or uh, extra attorneys and that, that the other offices are asking for will also uh, add extreme. Um, re- uh, strain on our resources. So therefore, I'm asking for four new uh, business specialists. And also two clerks to handle the workload through our office. Um, that is not as large as I know the other offices are asking, but that is a minimum. Of what will be required to maintain uh, the, the amount of work that will come through our office. One thing I would like to note. Is that with the Safety Act, the county is guaranteed 500,000 in revenue to the circuit clerk's office. With the, with the safe, with the bond going away. Um, for, we will not receive that 10% that we are guaranteed, which is 500,000 to our um, our revenue at the circuit clerk's office. I would also like to note that with, with that um, going away, the loss to other entities, state and local throughout. The state of Illinois from the uh, from King County comes to 1,713,686 dollars. So, King County is guaranteed 500,000 and the rest is potential revenue that the rest of the state and local entities would receive from. From um, bond. So with all the, the pretrial arrest um. That will be going on in the courtroom, also known as on call currently, we will need also um, overtime. And right now, we have estimated that we would need approximately 85,000 a year in overtime. That would double what we do right now in overtime. And we're thinking at least two clerks per shift because we do have to be on call and we do have to be um, we. We feel the way that the courtrooms are going to need to be operated, we will need more than one clerk in those courtrooms for those specific needs. And that's actually all I have, if anybody else has any questions. Thank you.
Hi there, um, my name is Lisa Austin with Court Services. I um, submitted a memo to you outlining what our current needs are. I think I've explained to the board before, we expanded pretrial on the, in the probation office in 2016. So really, for the most part, we're okay. However, the state of Illinois and in the Safety Act, they are now mandating that we have to do an interview as part of the risk assessment. Um, process and that's through the administrative office of Illinois. They're currently developing that tool and it will have an interview component. When they're looking at doing bond reports, right? So every single person who comes to bond call is going to have to have a bond report done, which is through my office, through the pretrial officers. Part of that bond report now is going to include this interview. There's a lot of talk at the state level about what does that look like? They're contemplating a two-part so that we'll have to do these bond reports on every single person who comes to bond call. And then additionally. I sent this chart out um, a couple of days ago, kind of for you to review. But you can see on that chart about 50% of the cases that will come to bond call would be detention eligible. And so what that means is that um, if, or detention hearing eligible. So if the state's attorney pursues the hearing on detaining them, then there will be an additional assessment that will need to be done. For class four felonies and misdemeanors, they have 24 hours to get that done for uh, 48 hours. And for any higher level felony, they have 24 hours to get that done. That would be where we would have to do an additional assessment in order to get that done for the hearing portion. So that now bond call isn't just a one-part process, it's a two-part process. Um, so that obviously will reflect a need for greater work because now I'm interviewing people. We anticipate the interviews are going to take 20 to 30 minutes per person. Generally speaking, this county has about 4,000 arrests per year. On this chart that I sent you out, if, if I multiplied that by 12, it comes out to just under 3,500. I, I, I think that's actually probably pretty close, if I were to go back and pull a whole bunch of Aprils, that's probably about right. Because once you get to September and August, those rates go up. So that's on the pretrial side. I'm only looking for two additional officers in order to accommodate those interviews, which will start in January. I heard um, state's attorney Moser talking about the um, sexual abuse piece, which I thank her for because I had not considered that when I put together the menu, uh, memo. Um, I'm asking for two additional psychologists starting um, in January and then a third the year after each. Let me back up, so of the cases who are eligible for detention hearing, about 66% of those are related to domestic violence. Domestic violence has its own specialty and special consideration for something we call a lethality risk assessment. Those take about five to six hours to complete and we would have to complete that upon request of the state. So it's, it's hard to determine right now what that would look like. However, if the state's attorney is going to pursue detention hearings or more criminal cases against. Child, uh, against sex offenders, each one of those evaluations takes 30 hours to complete. And you have to have a specially licensed forensic psychologist through the state of Illinois in order to do that. I currently only have six forensic psychologists at the um, diagnostic center at KC DC. Only two of them are currently SOM licensed, SOM stands for Sex Offender Management Board. They have to be specially licensed by the SOM board. So I only have two, so as we get more of these cases, I'm going to need more psychologists. Um, right now, we get between 70 to 100 of those cases a year. As the state's attorney beefs up that unit and they get more cases, that will mean a, a tremendous amount of workload increase for my department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Michelle Guthrie, I am the director of KingCom and I'm just going to provide a brief explanation of KingCom's slide within your packet. Uh, KingCom is currently budgeted for 18 telecommunicator positions and I'm requesting an additional three telecommunicator positions. And one additional administrative position. The reason for that is exactly what everybody's talking about today, which is technology. Um, currently, we handle 911 calls, CAD reports, but a lot of what we're implementing with the photo, text, videos. It won't be just handling 911 calls, we can have a call taker um, in one position while someone is responding to text, responding to video. And there's an additional workload. So these additional positions would be to increase staffing on each of our shifts so we can better serve the community and have um, more staff available. The administrative position is again in line with, with our partners here, talking about requests and going to court. It will take time, as it does now, to not only review 911 calls. But also to review all the additional evidence that will be part of this project, including photos, videos and texts. So I have the breakdown there in the slide. And then the last cost associated is just the one-time cost. It is a higher figure to overestimate um, some office improvements that we need. I, I've talked about this in previous meetings, we currently have only two administrative offices. Um, mine and the deputy director, currently the deputy director and our operations manager are sharing an office. And then our radio guy is in the yellow house under the stairs. Um, so if we could get some extra offices, that would be amazing, but it's also a challenge to build in a 911 communication center. There's no convenient time to be doing construction within the 911 center. So um, we continue to, you know, brainstorm what other solutions would be. And, and how we can um, you know, get some more space for our administrative team. So that's what that cost associated is. Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, excuse me.
Yes.
You mentioned that KingCom personnel would also have to deal with body cameras and the video?
No, not body cameras, that would be the, the way 911, right now, we can accept text messages. You can send a text to 911, it comes in on our software and we have a telecommunicator who responds to that text. Soon, we will have the implementation as soon, as soon as the state is ready to deliver it and KingCom is ready to accept it. We may also be able to accept videos and pictures. So if someone's on the scene of an accident and they would like to send video to 911. At some point in the very near future, we will be able to accept that. And right now, our team is a, a team of multitasking pros. But to talk on the phone and talk on the radio, and now you're introducing responding to a video and a text message is going to be extremely difficult. And the only way that we can um, alleviate the pressures of our team is to add additional staffing to the minimums of each shift. So we have enough people to respond to all the ways that the information makes it to 911. We're also responsible for dispatching the fire departments and the police departments. Um, and maintaining contact with them through a duration of an incident. So we have dispatchers dedicated to doing that, as well as dispatchers dedicated to answering phone calls and now these texts, videos and pictures.
But, all right, it's, it's still confusing to me about why you would be receiving videos. So if offline, if you would explain that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. And, and truth, I mean, we won't know the impact, we won't know, you know, I can tell you, we get 64 text messages a year right now. Um, people who text 911, that's currently what our statistic is. Um, you know, we don't know how many videos we get, we won't know how many people will try and send pictures. Those capabilities aren't there now, um, but we'll, we'll have to see when, when it's in Illinois.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and as it relates, I'm the last one before we get to the question portion, so my name's Clint Hall, I'm the chief judge. Just a couple of things that I want to echo, Ms. Moser started it and I'm going to kind of end with telling you a little bit again about where we're at. The port, portion that we're talking about today is going to be in effect on January 1st of 2023. And as chief judge, again, uh, we've reached out, we've been working collectively and we've been identified as a pilot site, one of only three in the state of Illinois. So we are collectively working very hard to be prepared for January 1st. But what I do want to emphasize to all of you is, as we look at this and we look at our needs, a lot of this is speculation. Um, we're doing our best to predict uh, where we're at and, and I think. And, and I think that we've done a fantastic job of working together, working with Court Services to try to figure out, okay, how many people are coming in and how is this going to impact us? But the reality, and truth be told, is until we get into it, we're really not going to know. So that's why I think when we talk about this three-year progression, we're going to be learning each month, starting in January of 2023. So it may be that we can come back to you in some respects and indicate to you that the burden is going to be less. Or unfortunately, we can come back to you and say that the burden might be more. So I just want to be upfront about that. When we talk about the impact on the judicial system, really, it's very limited when you look at the number of positions that everybody else is looking at. For the judiciary, the biggest impact is, right now, we have bond call seven days a week, 365 days a year. But that bond call usually lasts about an hour to an hour and a half, sometimes many as two hours. What this legislation does is it's going to, again, require us to have bond call, or that's what it's been referred to. But it's going to be more involved, it's going to be more extensive, it's going to involve more people. And as a result, not only are we going to be open and having these, but it's not going to be a two-hour day. When we figured our figures, we were estimating for employee purposes, six hours a day. And that's Saturday, Sunday, and holidays. So ultimately, when we talk about our needs, you've already started by helping us by approving the new courtroom build-out over at the multipurpose room. Because what's going to happen is the courtroom that we currently have, that's going to be dedicated to these hearings, not only holds bond call, but it also has orders of protection, hearings, both emergency and plenary, search warrants, miscellaneous cases. And we are now going to have to dedicate 005 to detention hearings full-time. So as a result, we have to have the new courtroom. The other thing is, on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, instead of having just these limited bond calls, we're going to have actual hearings. Because as was alluded to, what the statute says is, if you're arrested on a class four or class A misdemeanor, and the state seeks to detain, that you must hold that hearing within 24 hours of that petition being filed. So that means if someone's arrested on Friday and Ms. Moser files a petition to detain, we are having a full-blown hearing on Saturday. If that arrest happens on Saturday and the state's attorney decides to file that petition, we are having a full-blown hearing on Sunday. So that discovery has to be exchanged, police reports have to be exchanged, and the same thing would go for any sort of holiday. The other thing is, because those hearings are going to be more involved, we're going to have to open up our building to the public on Saturdays and Sundays and holidays. Because there will be witnesses that will be called. And so again, what does that mean for us as, on our request? We're going to have to have, we're asking for two bailiffs that are going to be there to be able to facilitate the people coming in and coming out. Security is going to have to be there to be able to screen people coming in and out of the building. In addition, and, and this is a great thing about the Safety Act, but the Safety Act is emphasizing that victims will have the right to try to seek orders of protection sooner and easier than they do right now. And Ms. Moser has indicated a desire to be able to offer that up. But what that means for us is that if people, more people are seeking orders of protection on the weekend, we're going to need paralegals to help draft that, that are going to have to work on Saturdays, Sunday, and holidays. We're going to have to have interpreters that are going to be there to be able to assist and provide access. And then we're going to need what we're calling a criminal case coordinator. And that's really what I'm calling our replacement for Doug Naughton. Over Doug's 30-something years, Doug has taken about 10 different positions. And as we try to get ready for him leaving us, we're trying to figure out everything that Doug does. And one of those things that Doug does every weekend is notifies everybody when we have different hearings, when those are going to take place, who has to be present. So we're going to need somebody that's not only going to have to take over what Doug is doing, but the responsibilities are going to increase as it relates to communicating and involving everybody. So ultimately, when I look at our request as compared to the PD and the state's attorney, we're only talking about five new positions. I know that's, that's, that's not insignificant, but, but at that point, it's, it's pretty limited. So again, it's just operating a courthouse on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays to get those hearings done. So I think I'm the last presenter, and so I will stay up here, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Shepro?
This is really for maybe everybody. Two aspects. One is with a lot of, I know the civil side laws, there is a process of the administrative regulations that tell you what the legislature really wanted you to do in often much, almost always more greater detail than you get from reading the statute. Is that going to be the case for this act as well? And if so, do we have any idea what, how that process is or will unfold?
Well, so I'm going to turn it, so the way that the legislation was passed in this master, if you want to add anything, there was very little direction. It's very, very vague, and that's been part of the reason that the entire state is having the difficulty it is. Because everybody wants specific answers and, and wants that information, Mr. Shepro. Unfortunately, to my knowledge, we don't have that, and I don't think that we should expect to have it. Ms. Moser, do you agree or disagree?
I agree. I would never disagree with you, Judge, openly.
They haven't ever?
The key was openly, right?
In a timely fashion.
So the, the way that it happened when this was originally passed is, right before the close of their session, we were able to get some trailer bills pushed through. But we went through a series of meetings on that with the sponsors of the bill, with the Sheriff's Association, the Chiefs Association, and the State's Attorneys Association. I imagine this is going to be the same thing. And my concern is the next time they're in session is in November. So we have a very significant amount of time where I think we're going to be planning for what this should be, like on January 1st of 2023, which I think we have to do with the understanding that it may upend itself in a series of meetings and trailer bills.
Now's my second question, which is, the trailer bills that have either been introduced or discussed, is there a focus to them? I mean, are there particular issues that are particularly acute that you think that there is some realistic possibility of relief?
So so far, there's been one trailer bill about pretrial fairness that was introduced, and it seems to have been sent back to the Rules Committee. I don't think it went very far. Part of that included the requirement for us to have to indict a case prior to going to this pretrial hearing, which is impossible because we do indictments on one day a week. So I know that between the many associations I've worked with, we're drafting our own language with the hope that we can get discussions between now and then. Our biggest focus is what cases can be held? Because it is my belief that too few cases can be, and that we're not really looking at it for the danger to the community, a true flight risk, or the fact that sometimes people need to be held in jail for their own safety. I give the example that a person with multiple DUIs, we wouldn't necessarily be able to ask them to be held, depending on how many they have. Second, a third DUI, I can't ask for that person to be held, and to me, that's a danger to the community. A robbery, I can't ask for somebody to be held on a robbery offense. Threatening a public official, I'll bring that up to all of you, public officials, not in a threatening manner. But I will bring that all up to you, that that's something I can't ask for somebody to be held. So there's a lot missing in this that we're really focusing on.
And just to add to that, Mr. Shepro, every organization, so the Conference of Chief Judges has identified three to five issues, as has State's Attorney, as has PD, as had Corrections, and we're all trying to get those addressed, both individually and collectively. You can imagine there's some overlap, but on the court side, one of the issues is that right now, the way the legislation reads is if someone doesn't appear for court, we can't issue a warrant. What we have to do is issue a rule to show cause. That rule to show cause has to be served or attempted to be served by the sheriff on a person who didn't show up for court. Only after that's not served and you have a new court date, can you ask for a warrant to be issued. Problem-solving court-wise, we have people that are in drug court, they know that they've, that they've absconded, they know that they're using. The way that the warrant is used is to try to bring them into court to help them. But right now, that, that, we, we don't have that ability. So there are things that I think that have been identified, and we're hopeful and optimistic that they'll get addressed. Mr. France?
France speaking, I, I guess I'm, we knew this was coming, and I kind of wish my chair had a seatbelt on it, because I'm blown away. And I know the, the goals of the Safety Act were well-meaning, and, and I understand most of them. And body cams certainly are going to be a game changer for a lot of things. But I mean, this is like the single business, biggest expansion of local government in the history of the state, I got to think. You know, hopefully, that we'll maybe get some savings in our incarcerations with jail time and that, I hope. But I imagine it's going to pale in comparison to the costs that we're going to have to incur. So that's my editorial. My question is, so you know, the sheriff's office has a, you know, a large number of people, but that pales in comparison to the municipal officers. So when you're talking about body cams, you're talking about every police officer in Cane County?
Yes.
Which is hundreds.
That was, we're over 1,000, closer to 15.
And, and outside of Cane County, correct, if the person is tried here in Cane?
Well, so and then there's other individuals, like the Illinois State Police. We have two districts here, but that doesn't mean that there wouldn't be more. There's special agents. I mean, we have lots of different municipalities that we work with, different police departments, FBI, Secretary of State. So we have a lot of body cam coming our way.
And the other, the other thing, to, to echo on to that, that one of the most difficult parts for the court system is that the Supreme Court just put out time standards that go into effect on July 1st, which indicate that, and I think it's great. But what they're telling all of us is, a case should be heard in a certain amount of time. So that's great. So the court cases don't languish in the system. However, the issue with all the body cameras is that in order for Ms. Moser to be able to do her job, and Ms. Conant to be able to do hers, and the court to be able to get it, that discovery and that body camera footage has to go through what Ms. Moser already indicated, and then it has to get sent, and everybody uses different systems. So one of the biggest difficulties we have in the court system with efficiency is that we can't even begin to work on a case until all the discovery is tendered. And so all that body camera footage, if Alburn is using one system, and Elgin is using another, and Aurora is using its third, you know, then you got to do that. Now, Ms. Moser's done a fantastic job, and it was music to my ears, where she said that they're looking into a discovery system that no matter what system it is, they're going to be able to get it downloaded into a form that gets sent out. But that's just another, when you're talking about the impact, where body cameras are going to have a massive.
This is, this is like a, a lot of work, and it's being mandated to be done in a very short period of time, basically seven days a week.
With no extensions.
We're looking at all these costs. So tell me all about the grants that we're going to be getting.
We have quite a few, so Mr. Leonard, and then Mr. Shepro, and then Mr. Martin.
First of all, I'd like to thank the judicial partners here for doing this presentation. You know, if I remember correctly, when we, the Safety Act was first presented to the board, I believe that the group as a whole was requesting about $26 million. And that could be implemented in the very first year. However, what you've done is you've taken that 26 million, all of you partners, and you've reduced it to 21.5, 21.4 million, reducing our exposure, hopefully, by over $4.5 million. Once again, I understand, these are guesstimates, it could go up, it could go down. But by implementing this act over a three-year period and proportionally giving us a certain amount each year to add, you've not only reduced our overall cost from 26 to 21.4 million, but you've also saved us in the very first year, looking at your sheet here, you're looking to request 5.2 million instead of 26 million. That's quite a savings.
Mr. Leonard, if I can, if I can just, we talked about this, the number is even lower. If you take a look at, this is an aggregate of all. So it's actually 9 million for all, for all, all in, 9 million.
Where is the 9 million?
I don't think, I think, again, it's, I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah.
This is in addition, bang, bang, bang.
Right.
It's actually $9 million. So it folds in. So if there's six, it includes.
We start out the first year with 5 million, next year, an additional 7 million.
Exactly.
The third year. So my point I was getting to was, not only are we saving the 4.5 million, hopefully overall, but the first year, we're saving somewhere between 16 and 20 million over what they had said they were going to need upfront, 26 million. The second year, we're saving somewhere between 9 million and 14 million. So what the judicial partners have done here is they've given us the ability to incorporate their needs over a three-year period within our budget. No, no hopeful about it. We, we will be able to do it. And that's without even considering ARP money. So, you know, I, I think basically what, you know, I had the pleasure of getting to chair the Judicial Public Safety Committee for a couple of years. And they've always worked so hard to be cognizant of how financially tight we are. And once again, they've done it again. So I think what they've done here is they've shown us that we can afford to not only include these requests, but also include mandates that are going to be needed and pay increases for the, the people throughout the county. And we can do that really with little or no ARP money, and hopefully, no tax increase in any way, shape, or form in the next year or two. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Shepro.
I, I agree with what Mr. Leonard said. However, I recall that these numbers were with the disclaimer that it does not include anything for additional physical facilities. And I don't know if we have a, a number on that, but I suspect it's, it's going to be significant. But the other question I, I think I wanted to ask about, is I understand that the way these things are set up is you don't get to come in and say, I'm sorry, Judge, we couldn't get all the information in 24 hours. And I wondered if there is a, something in the works. For example, if you had an incident in, let's say, the east side of St. Charles. And so you've got St. Charles, you might have West Chicago, you'd have departments that are crossing county lines. And now you've got to presumably, if it's a Cane County case, you've got to now get the cam, camera data, whatever, from any department that showed up in response to a call. And just my limited experience with trying to deal with cross-county things is that's another issue. And getting somebody to respond in 24 hours strikes me as being a, a formidable and perhaps often impossible task.
So, so, so this is the optimist in me talking, because I do think that what we're going to find out, for instance, in that specific issue, Mr. Shepro, if a defendant who is the subject of a detention hearing decides that they would like a continuance, I don't think that there's anything in the statute to indicate that that can't be given to them. So one of the things that was brought up is, if someone is subject to a petition to detain, is the defense attorney going to want to go to a hearing in 24 to 48 hours if they can't get or don't have access to all the information? And, and one of the arguments is, no, they're not. So ultimately, when, as we're preparing, we have to prepare for the worst. I mean, that, that's where we're at from a standpoint. We have to prepare for as if we're going to have these hearings on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. But my hope is that as the system figures this out, and as we get into it, it will find its own watermark, and we'll figure out really how many of these hearings we'll have. And the defendant can, the defendant can choose to waive that time requirement. But, but that's not something we know, that's a speculation, and we can't prepare for that until we see it happen. But, but again, going back to the optimist part, I really do believe that, that this will work. It's just going to take us some time to get there. Mr. Tappy?
No, it's Mr. Martin's turn.
Well, I'll follow up your optimist comment. To me, this seems to be, this whole, let's assume we get it paid for. I, I'm hoping, I'm anticipating that what all of the separate negotiating bodies are doing with the state of Illinois is to try to approach the concept of how impractical, at least in my mind, this stuff is. You know, if you sit, I'm sure the Constitution doesn't allow us to establish an algorithm that, that can interpret any of this stuff. You, you, I don't, I don't care who it is you've got sitting in that room watching an hour worth of videotape. It's a joke to believe that, that this is, if everybody's going to be coordinating and working hard and intelligent and compassionate and putting this together within the timeframe that is allowed. I, I, I think it's, I, to me, this process is cannon fodder for any, any defense attorney or the ACLU or anybody else. If they can't find 20 things wrong with every file as it goes through. If they can't find 20 things wrong with every file as it goes through, I I don't, I don't believe they've graduated from law school. And I'm hoping that what all your groups are doing is to, is to try to sift through this process and have something that makes some sense. But the ultimate, if the ultimate goal, you know, I mean, I think we all know what the ultimate goal is intended to be. And I just see, I can't see how we get from here to there with what is being demanded of the system. And and I, my, I guess the other, the, what, one question I have is, is Illinois on a unique pack with path with this? Because this, to me, this is just uniquely chaotic. If it's just Illinois that's doing it, I have no, forget the money, which, you know, we can't forget the money, but forget the money. Say we've got all of these, where, where, where in heaven's name are you going to acquire all these experts? You know, they don't exist.
Well, to your, to your point, this is unique to Illinois. Well, there have been, there have been other, but but Illinois will be the first, and Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, but this will be the first state in our, in the United States to have the system where it would be true, there'd be no cash bail. There's New Jersey and others that have have attempted similar or something like it, but we're the first in the country to do this.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm charging you all with the responsibility. You're all struggling to exercise anyway, but this isn't going, I, great. I hope, I hope you're right, Clint. I don't see this working. I see a quagmire of, I could, I see somebody walking into a room, you know, with with zip drives and and everything else, and it's all up in the air, and everybody's going crazy. And 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 but, you know, I don't have my license anymore.
Well, but to your point, and I don't want to belabor it, but what's going to happen and what we all agree upon is, come January 1st, there are going to be judges that make decisions that are going to get taken up on appeal. There are going to be things that aren't disclosed, or not disclosed, but aren't going to be able to be turned over in time, and decisions it'll make. And then it'll go up to the appellate court and the Supreme Court, and they're going to give us guidance as to what's constitutional, what's not constitutional.
But that's why I think it's, it's doomed to fail, because there's no way that all this stuff can get done, and no way that any human being can sit in a room and watch, you know, what, watch, watch a policeman's camera bob up and down in, in the, it just, it doesn't.
Just wondering if you were going to get your license back, because I was going to have openings on January 1st, and I.
Well, it's a good reason not to get it back.
Very good.
Yeah, I guess the only thing, before, I just, I really do want to say that, you know what, I, we're going to, we're going to get there. I mean, as a circuit, and I don't disagree with you, and that's the problem that the entire state is having. It it back drew to what you had said, or Mr. France? It is, it's a massive piece of legislation, the biggest that I've seen since I became a lawyer in 1993. It fundamentally shifts a lot of things that have done the criminal justice system for decades. And so with that, not only that, but when you talk about the the impact it has on county government, it's a huge impact. But but I, again, and it's maybe Pollyannaish, but we've been working really hard as a group. You know, we continue, and we will continue to work hard, and I just think that we're going to get there. I just think that it's going to be, it's going to be messy. But we're going to, we have a system that works together, which is, which is pretty unique, I think. I mean, I know you've heard us say this, but we work together, we're going to work together to make, to get this done. And and we will come back to you, and if we're wrong, as far as what we think, either way, we'll come back and let you know. But the best part about it is we're communicating right now with you guys, and you guys are listening to us. And we're going to do our best to get it done. And we're well, we're well on our way.
I didn't, I don't want to create an incorrect impression.
Oh, no, no.
I think, I think all of you who are working, and I very much appreciate. I mean, I was chairman of this committee for a couple of years. They do, it's remarkable to me how the justice partners work together. It sounds like a bunch of superheroes.
I think that's factual.
I didn't miss that. I, I think it's not only remarkable, it's admirable. And 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 I know that they, that you're applying some real sophistication to this. And 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 I don't, I know, I have no doubt in my mind that you're going to be prepared to do it. I'm just saying.
Yeah, Mr. Martin, I don't mean to interrupt you, because we have several other people that like to speak. The issue I see at hand is that while we can debate the validity or the the value of this legislation, we are left with the impact of it. And that is something that financially we have to pay attention to, to make sure that we give our justice partners the capacity to implement the laws they've been given and to work forward towards that. And why, at the same time, especially in this economy today, that we remain highly sensitive to our taxpayers. So it's, it's quite a conundrum that we are faced with, all of us are faced with. Mr. Brown and then Mr. Tepe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, one of the beauties of being called on almost last is most of the questions have been asked that you were going to ask. But obviously, I want to thank everybody for putting this together and working on this in such great detail.
Mr. Brown, could you a little bit closer?
Closer? Okay, so again, thank you, everybody, for putting this together. Money's the money, that's certainly well understood, I think, by all of us. But sitting on judicial and public safety, every month, we hear from almost every one of these departments, we can't find people. And we can't retain people, and we can't find people. So I guess my question now, after all these others have been asked, is how are you going to find these people? The court services mentioned forensic psychiatrists, that there was a need for two of those. I would imagine that those people would be very hard to find. And you're going to have every county throughout the state looking for these people. So how is this even achievable?
Well, so a couple of things, and I, and if anybody, any other, but number one, you're 100% right. That is, that's going to be a challenge, that that will and continues to be a challenge for all the reasons that we've talked about. And and I don't have an answer for you. You are, you are also right in that all these counties are going to be competing for new ASAs. And so those ASAs, those Assistant Public Defenders, those forensic psychologists, whatever it is, part of it's going to be, you know, what is the market willing to pay? And but so, but so you're 100% right. And because I don't have an answer, I'll make Jamie figure out what the answer is.
I was just going to steal him from other counties.
Yeah. But the other comment I have on that, if this has to be in place, quote unquote, be in place January 1, again, being on the county board now for almost two years, I've come to learn that it takes about three months to hire somebody. So you really almost have to start putting out applications now.
100%, but the body camera stuff is the biggest impact. And because that doesn't go into effect until 2025, that's the largest share. January 1st of 2023, this is where I get to put our needs in, you know, the courtroom's going to open on January 1st of 2023. People are going to be walking through the doors. So on that end, that's where we need those bailiffs, the interpreter, the paralegal. Again, preparing for, when we were talking to Sheriff Hane and Lloyd about who who opens up the courthouse, how long are they going to have to be there? What kind of overtime does that require? You know, a gentleman, one of, a judge from Central Illinois said that their county board said, well, if you're going to open it up, then let's just have court on Saturday, you know? And and we didn't like that idea, just because you're talking about opening up every courtroom then. But the reality is, is that for January 1st, we do need to be able to have that courtroom manned and ready to go. And then with S.A. Masser, I mean, one of the biggest things that she, that she's always been about, she's been very passionate about domestic violence. But again, we could see a huge influx in the number of orders of protection. Order protection takes to get done, Andrea, what, about an hour and a half to two hours? Hour and a half to two hours to get an O P done. Circuit clerk has to be able to get that, has to be able to get that done. We've got this, and then it's got to get circulated over to the sheriff. So all of us that are here, you know, that we're all involved in that process. And now you're talking about doing that on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays as well, which the law allows for right now, but it's just not utilized as much as it probably could be. So that's the courthouse doors opening up, you know, six hours.
Thank you, Mr. Tepe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I want to, want to echo some of the things that Judge Hull just said. It's extremely impressive to sit here and to see a group of departments work as well together as this group is. And I have some of the same concerns that Mr. Brown just echoed, which is how are you going to get the personnel? But not only how are you going to get the personnel, also, how are you going to get the office space done? You can't get that done in six months, can't get that done in a year very easily, okay? And you're already busting at the seams. And I'm extremely skeptical about the money that my fellow board member says is readily available to pay for all of this.
I'll be happy to show it to you.
Yes, I would love to have that explained. Thank you.
Yes.
Judge Hull, you've mentioned that the body cam doesn't go in effect until 2025. But am I correct that the review requirement for those who have the body cams goes into effect January 1?
Yes, so the 2025 is just the smallest departments. That's when they have to have it done. The bigger departments like Aurora and Elgin, the Sheriff's Department, they're all now. And so, but the review of all of that is already happening.
I'm saying, the need for the people to be experienced in conducting these hearings or reviewing all of this is not delayed.
Correct, yes.
And and not only that, but Kane County, throughout the county, has always been very progressive. And so as, as you said, and it's not, Aurora's got them, Elgin's got them, Sheriff Hane has already, has already have them. So you're right, a majority, I think, if you were to look, a majority of our police officers already are equipped with that.
So I mean, to the point that I think Mr. Brown and Mr. Tepe are alluding to is, again, that the need for those people is now. And I think the other is we, if we had the ability to vote the money today, you'd still be wondering, how long does it take to find the the office space? And and I I agree, I, I'm really wondering where everybody is going to find all of these experienced people, which I think is pretty clear that you are going to have to have them.
Well, and then, and then with the remote, for instance, with the office, because we agree, and I appreciate everything. But so we're going to have to get creative as well. I mean, we have to think about remote, remote work. We have to, there are just things that we're going to have to try to do. I mean, we have to make it work. So in the end, you know, we will figure out, but but I don't disagree that there are going to be a huge need, and it's going to be difficult to find the people. I agree that the space is going to be an issue, you know? So those are all, those are all problems that we're trying to address.
This isn't really a suggestion, but I recall School District 303, there was a whole class of people that went through their four years in mobile classrooms.
Many people did, many people did. And they were determined to be not, not well-used and unsafe.
But, yeah, oh, no, you're right. And then the hope is, I know I sound a little bit, you know, the hope is, is that we, as we do this, and we understand what the, what it's, what this entails, there may be technology that will get better, that will help us do it. You know, there, Ms. Masser walked out, I don't mean to, you know, but there may be ways that we find out that we can do it better, we can do it faster, we can do it more efficient, that there. So so again, the hardest part on this whole thing is there's so much that we don't know that we're going to have to learn. And the hard part, I think, from the county board's perspective, is we have to plan for the worst, and then we will keep coming to you and giving you reports, and hopefully find that we're finding those efficiencies, and we're finding the things that won't make it quite as bad.
So this is the second time in two days I've said this saying, and I haven't said this saying in a very long time. We have to plan for the worst and hope for the best. And this is what we have to do. So I think our 5:30 is coming close, and I believe everyone who's had the opportunity and wanted to ask a question has voiced their opinion. Just as a quick financial summary, with the judicial partners combined, our, our heroes, we're going to get them capes. In '23, the ask is, and I'm just going to round up, please, about $5 million additional. In '24, approximately $7 million. And in '25, approximately $9 million. This is not including additional capital expenses, as we just talked to, regarding spatial needs. So that, that will be a separate line item. And I'm sure that Mr. Berman is quite excited and happy and Mr. Leonard to dive into this budget and to figure out how we're going to be making it work. But I do remind you that if we cannot find a solution that is appropriate early in June, we'll have to come back to this, to our table, if you don't mind that, to discuss whether or not we have to go out to referendum. Because we have, we have a narrow timeframe to make this decision. So.
Bates, please?
Yes, Ms. Bates.
What would the referendum be?
It is going to, we spoke about that previously, Ms. Bates. This is the countywide merchant sales tax.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're all good. May I please have a motion? Yes.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
I very much so, please.
I would make that motion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shepper, all in favor? Okay, thank you all, have a great night.